Of our sessions, we will focus on a social and emotional skill that will help us to get to know one another, identify with our emotions, and to increase our engagement. Today, we are focusing on the SEL skill of self-management. So, on a scale of 1 to 10, rate yourself on how focused you feel at this time. 1 being least focused and 10 being laser-like focused. And go ahead and write down this number on a piece of paper near you. You have this number written down. Change one aspect of your environment to increase your number, thus your engagement. For example, you could exit out of email if that will distract you. You could place your cellphone on mute. So right now, go ahead and change one aspect of your environment to increase your engagement. Thanks, Kelly and Virginia, for sharing. Great. So in the coming weeks, we will have many opportunities to discuss social and emotional learning. Castle, which stands for the Collaborative for Academic Social Emotional Learning, has outlined five core competencies for SEL. And they are shown in this graphic here. Self-management, self-awareness, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, and social awareness. Furthermore, their website, www.castle.org, is filled with research, guidance, and tools for educators and school communities. This slide includes the name of your book talk facilitators. My name is Ricky, and with me are my colleagues Ramona, Audrey, and Bettina. We are state literacy specialists in the Office of Early Learning and Literacy at the South Carolina Department of Education. You will get to hear from each of us at different points in our book talk discussions. To advance for reading chapter one in preparation for today, please have available your MTSS book, a writing utensil, a notebook or paper, it could be digital too, and post-it notes if you have those available. Also, you will be accessing different links throughout the time we have together. I went ahead and dropped that digital agenda in the chat box earlier, but please have that available because that's where you'll be able to click on the links. All the necessary links again are located on the digital handout, and there are a few of the Microsoft Teams features that we want to remind you of. First, please mute your microphone when not speaking. Feel free to add questions or comments in the chat feature anytime throughout the discussion. I would love to have your camera on if that's possible so we can see our participants.
As an office, this is the first time we have hosted a book study professional development learning opportunity, and we couldn't be more excited. Book studies encourage group of educators to explore topics in a way that's engaging and meaningful, and it's unlike any more traditional forms of professional development. Now, I'd like you to take a minute to read about the importance and the purpose of a book study. You may have noticed that we highlighted the words like discuss, dialogue, and discourse. These words are important because discussions are foundational to a book study. Each session, we will be engaged in discussions in order to reflect and learn from the information presented in the book, most importantly, to reflect and learn from the knowledge and experiences of each other. So that means that we need you to be participants throughout our time together. We have established a consistent book study structure, and at this point, you've received an email from us with a link to the digital agenda. The digital agenda has all of the necessary information and the links needed for each session. We will be sending a new digital agenda a few days prior to each new session. Also, each book talk will be recorded. We will email the recordings of the book talks to you the following session. This will typically take about a month. As current regulations require closed captioning to be added to all recordings provided by the South Carolina Department of Ed. And so if you're unable to participate in a live session, you can catch the recording once it's been received back from our team with the accessibility features made within the video. Please note that only participants that are present during all of the live sessions will be able to receive continuing education credits. Approximately every two weeks, we will meet virtually for our book talk sessions, and be sure to refer back to the very initial email that was sent with information about those specific dates. And also, you'll have optional opportunity to join us on Voxer. Now Voxer is an application that you can download onto your phone, or you can use it through their website. And Voxer is a great way to reflect, ask questions, comment, and discuss the readings during times when we are not meeting virtually. This opportunity is optional. However, we hope that you will join with us in that discussion on our off time. We'll show you how to sign up for that, for our Voxer group, at the end of the session today. Now to create the most ideal conditions for our book talk discussions, we have put together a few simple list of virtual meeting norms. So the norms include, we're asking you to be present by having your cameras on, and locating yourself will you'll be least distracted. And be prepared by having read the required readings and utilizing the reading protocols that we've shared in advance. Share airtime when speaking to allow others to be heard in the conversation, and actively listen to others to hear the heart of their ideas. Now, I say respect others' ideas even though they may differ from the stance that you may take, and be sure to support your ideas by drawing connections back to the text. Now, we'd love to hear from you. You are going to use the Bitly address that's seen on the screen, or you can scan the QR code to be directed to a website called Idea Boards. Now, Idea Boards is similar to Padlet, but in Idea Boards, you're able to like each other's comments and even add to others' posts. Use this space to record an eight to 10-word response regarding what you think MTSS is. Then take a few minutes to read your colleague's responses. You can use the heart feature to show that you agree with others' thinking. And we'll return to the large conversation group in about four minutes so that we can discuss some of the reoccurring ideas or other comments that you have to this prompt. So go ahead and click on the link that's in your digital agenda, or type in the Bitly address, or scan using the QR code and answer the response to MTSS is. Oh, I'm interested to hear more about this. Be sure as you finish up your response to take a moment to look at everyone else's ideas, Okay, so what are you noticing about one another's comments? Feel free to unmute yourself to share your ideas.
What I noticed is that most of the participants, they realize that it is a framework.
Yes. And I hope that we see through our discussions that each framework may look different based on the needs of the district, based on the needs of a school. I'm going to go back to that mathematical equation. The best part of RTI plus the best part of PBIS to help all students, no matter their current level. And I think we saw that in the first chapter around how this is for all students. It's not just about intervention. Noticing some connections to it's integrating the behavior focus as well as academic focus. I'm seeing multiple times discussion around all students, promoting student success. All right, Ramona, do you want to kick us off with the next part?
I'm sorry. I was just talking away, and of course, I was on mute, you know? Life in the virtual world. So thank you all for sharing your ideas on the ideas board. For this next part, we are going to use the 4A's protocol. We'll ask you in just a moment to join a breakout room by choosing, by clicking on the link that we'll share in just a moment. You'll have minutes in your group to use the 4A protocol to discuss chapter one. As a reminder, prior to coming to today's meeting, you should have utilized the 4A protocol to read chapter one and mark places where you found that the author was making assumptions about the reader of the text, where you agreed with the text, where you wanted to argue with the text, and what parts made you want to act. You'll then spend time within the breakout room discussing these 4As. Be sure to use the protocol to help pace out the discussion and ensure everyone has an opportunity to share their thinking. All right. So this here is the sheet that contains the links for the breakout rooms. Take a minute to go to the breakout room by clicking one of the following links. Where this is voting by choice, so just choose, select one of the links. Sign up, the signup document that is linked in the digital agenda. You can sign up for one of the rooms by typing your name in the list and then click on the link to be directed to the room. You will notice that one of the literacy specialist facilitators are assigned to each room. If your school or district is working with one of us, please join our rooms so that we can collaborate in the discussion. Once again, I'm just going to start from the beginning with that. Type your name in this document that's linked by the digital agenda, and then click the link at the bottom in order to go to the breakout room that you've chosen. The breakout rooms in teams are very similar to the rooms in a school building. Right now, you're in the main room, similar to meeting room. You're going to exit this room but not leave the building for good and enter another room by clicking the link. When you leave the breakout room, you'll re-enter the main room by clicking the resume button. If you lose us, don't worry. The link to the main meeting is in the digital handout.
And I'm looking at the time, and it looks like in 15 minutes will be 4:05. So if we can be sure to be back here by 4:05, we'll be ready to go.
Thank you. Any questions before we hit to the breakout room?
All right, we'll see you in a room. I'm just going to wait a second to make sure no one has any issues in here.
Okay, thanks, Audrey. I'm going to join my room.
Okay.
Okay, I'll join my room in a moment.
Audrey?
Yeah.
We have to leave the meeting in just a few minutes. I know y'all just, everybody just went to breakouts. Is there going to be a recording of this for today? We already had a conflict for today's meeting, unfortunately.
Yes, there'll be a recording, but it will take a little bit of time because it has to be closed captioned before it can get back out.
Right.
And also, I don't know if it'll record any of the breakout room discussions where that's part of it, but yeah, we'll do what we can.
Okay, we appreciate that. That'll work for us, and we'll try to discuss here. We haven't even had an opportunity here to discuss our own thoughts on the book. So we'll try to do our own little breakout discussion about that here, and then our hope will be moving forward that we have time to talk about the book before we come into this webinar as well.
Our book just arrived. Our book's just arrived.
Oh, oh my, yeah, that makes it hard.
Sorry about that, but we do appreciate it. We're looking forward to the process.
Okay, great. I'm going to head over to my room.
That's not you then, that's.
Hey, we may be the only ones that, nope, there's more people here, yay, hey.
Yes, group one is making their way back right now.
Great, great, great.
Group three is coming back too.
Okay, whoever's watching that activity, if you'll let me know when it's green, we're ready to go.
All right, I'm gonna go back. We just have one person still on hold.
Okay.
Anyone know where, which room Leroy was in?
Uh, that was room two. All right, looks like we're ready to forge ahead. So it was great to kind of have some conversation using that A protocol in the breakout room. So for now, I'd like you to take a few minutes and have a shared conversation using the three, two, one discussion protocol. We would love to have three people share a highlight from your group's discussion. Any brave souls here?
I will share, in my group, we discussed the RTI as well as PBIS, looking at the tier one, the universal screener, just making sure that that is core, solid instruction for the academics as well as with the behaviors using your, you know, school-wide procedures, just making sure that you spend a lot of time the first few weeks of school and each time that there is a break, that you spend some time with those school-wide expectations so that the students know the expectations and you can actually teach those expectations, not just review, but also teach those expectations. And therefore, we may not need to have tier two and tier three if we do a better job of tier one.
Very well said, being proactive rather than reactive, thank you. There are two more that can share highlights. All right, not to prolong the time, we'd love to have two participants share connections that they had while participating in the whole group or breakout room discussions. This point in the, in the book study is where we gather from each other's wisdom and learning. So please don't be shy, you can pop it in the chat or unmute and share. I'm feeling kinda lonely.
All right, Ramona, I will, I will share a connection. As our previous participant was sharing about just that need for that focus on the core and including teaching behavior, it was reminding me of, as a classroom teacher and being in a school where we had a PBIS system and data was tracked on how many office referrals were done. And we would have meetings to talk about by month, how many do we have? And we noticed a trend that coming back in January after the winter break, we had a lot more behaviors then. And so the plan was, we were gonna have refresher lessons on our expectations that went with our rubric for the area. And sure enough, that next year, we put those things in place and January's data went down, we didn't have as many. And so just hearing that was reminding me of, yes, we're using data, we're thinking about what, what are we doing with the core and how is that affecting everyone? So yeah, exciting.
Absolutely, thank you for sharing. Someone shared, it reminds them of leader in me. And like, like Audrey and Ms. Sims were saying before, this MTSS process is an integration of the academic as well as the behavioral, using data to support decisions on both ends. So finally, is there anyone that has a question at this time? Please unmute your mic and share or drop it in the chat. And while I'm waiting, someone else said thinks, I think sometimes we get caught up with what we are dealing with that we forget that we are like a cruise ship. Our boat is full of educators dealing with the same issues. Okay, yep, that was good to hear, yep, absolutely. How do we make both of these systems work together? What is the magic formula? Well, I don't think that there is a magic formula, but like Audrey was saying, start the foundation, everything starts with the data. It keeps it out of the personal realm, it keeps it grounded in facts. It's always something that you can go back to, to see if there's movement and use that as a source of reflection. And in terms of how do we make both of these systems work together? Well, that is the whole reason for this book study is to help walk you through that process. So stay tuned and I can't wait to hear your story on the other side. All right. And up next, we have Bettina.
So there are six domains of MTSS. You have problem solving, communication, collaboration, leadership, building, capacity and infrastructure. So all six of these domains support a universal design for learning, which is the UDL. UDL guides the design of learning experiences to proactively meet the needs of all learners. So when you use UDL, you assume that barriers to learning are in the design of the environment, not in the student. UDL is based on brain science and evidence-based educational practices. It also leverages the power of digital technology. The SAM 2.0 instrument is used to measure school-level SC MTSS implementation. So quality implementation of SC MTSS is associated with increased likelihood of instruction and interventions leading to successful student outcomes. Thus, it is important for schools to monitor not only the student outcomes, but also how assessments, instructions, interventions and database problem solving are put into place. For example, the fidelity, how to use fidelity with which these elements are implemented. So we have identified a connection between the SAM and our first chapter. So in chapter one, it states effective academic RTI and PBIS teams include representatives from each of these groups to maximize the extent to which all educators in the school are actively involved in establishing, planning and sustaining these initiatives. So basically, this is an opportunity for you to evaluate who is on your team. You can use the SAM rubric to determine if your teams are functioning at maximum capacity. So the OELL team has developed MTSS modules to support districts and schools in developing a strong MTSS structure to support all students. These videos are linked to your agenda within the section for connections to the SAM and MTSS framework. So you may find these videos useful to utilize with your team members when you are reviewing the SAM. Within your school MTSS team, we encourage you to use the time between now and our next book study session to complete the SAM rubric for domain one as it supports the learning we did in chapter one specifically regarding leadership. If you are working with a literacy specialist this year, please be sure to include them in the process. As we continue through our book study, we will return to the SAM for self-reflection and goal setting. Even if you've completed the SAM in the past, it is extremely important for you all to return to it now to determine your next steps. You may find the spotlight protocol, which is also linked to your digital agenda, helpful as you are thinking through the SAM rubric.
Okay, so let's now take a moment to reflect the what and so what about the information that was presented in chapter one and the discussions you had during this week's book talk session. Also, let's think about the now what. Now, what will you do in response to today's book study and learning? What actionable steps can you take to enhance MTSS in your school or district? So at this time, I want you to take out three post-it notes or draw three boxes on your piece of paper and I want you to write one actionable step on each of these three post-it notes. For example, an actionable step I might take could be to collaborate with my school's MTSS teams to complete the SAM and that leadership domain number one. So at this time, write down your three actionable steps and decide which step you will do first. When you have your steps, I want you to use the chat box and share at least one of those steps with the group. So I'll give you about two or three minutes to complete this task and then submit your actionable step to the chat and read through the chat. Thanks, Virginia, for posting your action step. Oh, it looks like there's more coming in. Go ahead and take this next minute or so to post your action step to the chat and to read through the responses of others.
Ricky, on my end, I'm not able to see what's happening in the chat. Do you mind sharing a few of the ideas?
Yes, absolutely. So Virginia has, oops, they're coming in now quickly. Virginia said email MTSS coordinator, school, to set aside a meeting time to complete the SAM together. Monica said collect data to determine next steps. Also, we have identify district and school goals for MTSS. Review my school SAM domain one document and work with the MTSS team to create goals and action steps for areas of growth. Familiarize myself with the SAM. Yes, great, keep them coming. I'll give you about 30 more seconds to get yours typed in. Yes, Kelly said make my team aware of SAM and work through it together as we progress through this study. Wonderful. More about the SAM, reviewing the SAM. Use the SAM to reflect on where we are as a district with MTSS and then figure out our next steps. Wonderful, well, go ahead and post your action step still. We're gonna move on though, so thank you for sharing your action steps in the chat. It's wonderful to see some of these similarities that we're seeing with our first initial action step. So we're gonna, we're gonna give you a few reminders for our next book session together. So for our next book study session on November 5th, we will be reading chapter two and using the cash protocol to guide our breakout room discussions. In a few moments, I will provide you a preview to this cash protocol. And as a reminder, complete domain number one leadership on the SAM tool. Also, as part of our book study, Audrey mentioned earlier that we would like to invite you to participate in a discussion that is ongoing throughout the time we're together. So we have set up a Voxer group specifically for participants in this book study. And Voxer, if you haven't used this app before, it's similar to like a walkie-talkie device, but it also records a conversation so that participants can listen in at their leisure. So this Voxer group is being established to encourage conversation about MTSS between our book study sessions. And it will also allow you to network and learn more from one another. So in order to participate in our Voxer group, you will need to sign up using the Google form provided in this link. It's also on your digital agenda and we really hope you join us. It's also on your digital agenda and we really hope you join us for more conversation on Voxer too. So as you read Chapter Two, to prepare for next session, use the CASH protocol. It's previewed on this slide and again, you can find this organizer on your digital agenda. Again, we will use this protocol to help guide our discussions in the breakout rooms the next time we're together.
So as we wrap up, we ask that you take about five minutes to complete the exit ticket for today's session. The link is located at the top of your digital agenda and facilitator's guide. And please be sure that you complete the exit ticket because it is attendance and will be documented for the book study session with this exit ticket. Participants who attend all sessions as documented by the exit ticket will receive 12 renewal credits at the end of the study for continuing ed credits. You can get there through the digital agenda with the Bitly or with the QR code. We thank you so much for this opportunity to learn and grow with you and even though we are apart and we hope that you have found our first session beneficial to your thinking about MTSS. Please be sure to leave additional comments or feedback that will help us to plan for our next session so that it'll be beneficial to you and we can't wait until we meet again. The facilitators will stay online if you have any questions that you wanted to ask with us. Otherwise, we will see you on November 5th.